6:30, members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Monica Sack, Chair. Meeting was called by committee members, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and Monica Sack. Number two, proper county budget commission tax rates.
You have in front of you the letter that I received from the proper county budget commission last Friday with the resolution accepting rates for next year, which they'd like to have back by November 2nd, so it needs to be passed tonight unless you want to have a special meeting, which I didn't think we did. Rate, I don't believe the rates, the millage rates that we've received have changed as long as I've been here. We've basically divided the same every year unless there's some dire emergency that a township or municipality requests a change. There are attachments that show the current rates and, like I say, they have not changed. So it's just a routine of accepting it so that we can get it turned back in and move on.
Questions? Questions?
Need a motion to send this to full council?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Does that have a question to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting, special finance committee meeting is adjourned at 6:30, 2:00 P.M.
We have to wait till 6:40 for the next.
Called special economic development committee meeting to order. Members in attendance are Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair.
And Monica.
Oh, yeah, Dan Monica's here too. I'm greeting the members in attendance, not the members. That's my fault, that's all right. First up, we have the special economic development committee meeting was called by committee member Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, chairs discuss the community improvement corporation. Number two, we have the city community improvement corporation. In front of you, you have draft legislation for the city to start its own community improvement corporation. You also have behind the draft legislation, a draft of the regulations and rules to be followed. Does anybody have any questions or any discussion?
Yeah, I guess Andrew and I were kind of wanting to hear from the law director about exactly what the benefit would be of this and, I guess, if there's any drawbacks. And in a little bit of research I did, it sounded like, you can probably make my thought, you know, it sounded like we wouldn't need the, for the demolition of the homes, the land bank. It sounds like this would basically be a land bank, so unless I misunderstood.
It is, it operates in a similar fashion to land bank. Land bank operates and is funded through state and local grants, state and federal grants to, for specific purposes, acquiring selected properties and repurposing those properties. Community improvement corporation is more focused on an economic development aspect. It allows a city or whatever entity to transfer properties that it acquires into a community improvement corporation. That community improvement corporation can then make best use determinations for that land. It can demo if it has budget and money and wants to, or more importantly, it can transfer, it can pick between uses. It doesn't have to take a piece of property, put it out to public bid, and whoever gets it, gets it. It can, it can choose and entertain development, development offers, solicit development, or whatever it needs to do to accomplish a development goal. Land bank is a little more limited in how they transfer property, how they de-rider property. They're much more limited in what they can do, and I think specifically our land bank is set up, as I said, it's not dealing with commercial property a lot.
Yeah, and that's based off of grants.
Right, well, yeah, exactly, that's what, the sources of funding.
And the community improvement has hand parking grants and things like that also?
Yeah, there's nothing that prohibits it from seeking any kind of funding that it wants, and it can, it can generate that. I mean, if a community improvement corporation was given a piece of land and they got a grant to build something, rentable or whatever, it could generate potentially revenue. But for our purposes, the biggest thing it does is it allows us to take a piece of city-owned property and ensure that it gets put into the hands of somebody that's going to develop it and create economic development jobs instead of just letting lots of dead and just ends up being, becoming part of somebody's real estate portfolio and nothing happening.
Right, well, and so then here's my other question, so let's say the parking lot next door here, we want to get rid of that, and so do you just give that to the, or?
You could.
Do we give that to them and say, if you sell it, when you sell it, you want the money back, or how does that work together? That was my one idea.
Yeah, no, the, we can, we can donate a piece of land to the community improvement corporation, and we can put some restrictions as to how we want it dealt with, but no, once it goes in there, revenues generated, those sorts of things stay within that community improvement corporation. They can use it to acquire another land, develop other property, they can use it to create grant programs. One of the things that we've been following online, Tiffin's been doing downtown facade grants for some of their buildings, they're doing that through a similar type entity. Gagin did some recently with a factory that they developed and released it out. So it can generate some of its own revenue, we can also have some restrictions on, you know, the land and things that goes into it, that the city would put into it.
So basically, if the city owns the land, we can give it to them or we can sell, right?
Yes, yes, or, you know, the community improvement corporation can operate separately. It can acquire a piece of land on its own, you know, if it has a couple thousand dollars in it because it sold a piece of land and it wants to go acquire another piece of land to tear it down or facilitate development or whatever, it can go do that on its own as well, so you wouldn't necessarily have to be involved in it.
Okay, I think my biggest thing was, you know, Mr. McKeever, you know, if we have, we do have several properties now we're trying to sell. I think we're in a position to give them to the, that's not the idea at all, is it?
No, no, this is something on a much smaller scale now. It could be used for those properties, you know, a scenario where somebody came to the city and said, hey, I would like this property and I would like to do something that creates a thousand jobs on that property.
Then we can transfer.
We can transfer it to the community improvement and we can facilitate the transfer to that entity as opposed to maybe putting it out for bid and now somebody thinks, oh, well, they want it, so I'm going to bid the price up, and they give a bidding award such that this developer no longer wants it because the price got too high, and we can avoid some of those problems. I don't think we're there yet with any properties, but, you know, they come in the future. The existence of a community improvement corporation doesn't mean that you have to use it. I mean, it has to have, you know, supportive meetings and, but it doesn't, you know, the counties had one for decades and now I don't think anybody here knows the last time it was used, so, you know, it doesn't have to do anything, but in those rare cases when we do have something that we can facilitate, it's very crucial to have it.
All right, the other question I have, like you asked about it, but let's say we have a certain property that we purchase, is they can't transfer money to the city if they sell?
Yeah, it's a separate corporation.
Can we stipulate that you get a portion of the sale if we?
No.
Okay, but you answered my question, I just, it's all there, once we give it to them, we can't put any stipulations other than what can be put on there?
Yeah, which we control through zoning and some other things. There are, there are also restrictions that can go with the transfer of the land. If we own land, we can put restrictions on the deed or the title or anything like that, and then whoever we subsequently transfer to, those restrictions can.
With tax.
Yeah, so if we have a piece of property, we want to make sure it didn't become, you know, yeah, something horrible, we can say, whatever horrible thing can't be on this property, we can transfer it, have that restriction applied to it.
Okay, well, so has, we can, what we spiritual, is necessary?
We do file nonprofit, as a nonprofit corporation with the state for this?
Yes, well, in with the IRS, so you'd have to go through all those steps, and I just got a piece of last week, and we're going to do about five of them next week, so, there's one more, it's an expensive filing, but, it's a pretty.
I'll make a motion to, to the legislation as is.
Motion from Mr. McKeever, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Monica, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, motion passed. With that, I will adjourn the economic development committee meeting at 6:40, 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, Monica. If you're going to give a short review of this once we get a meeting up, pass up to the.
Yeah. So did you? I don't know about that.
Were you emailing me, seeing this understood, I thought?
No, you told us.
The regular meeting of the U.S.A.R. City Council for October the 16th, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
McKeever, here. Myers, here. Wireball, here. Truca, here. Sack, here. Foat, here. Shaw, here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the October 2nd, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those meetings, or those minutes?
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept October 2nd regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak, is there anyone who would like to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We've got two this evening, and I'm missing one. The first one is from the health and safety committee, it's to the health and safety committee, it's addressed from the mayor, dated October 5. Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City of U.S.A.R.'s Traffic Commission would like to recommend an amendment to the traffic control map. Number one, repeal number 6267, dated December 20, 1967. No parking of a motor vehicle shall henceforth be permitted on the south side of East Southern Avenue from the Marion Road east to Whetstone Street in the City of U.S.A.R., Ohio, and replaced with no parking of a motor vehicle shall henceforth be permitted on the north or south side of East Southern Avenue from the Marion Road east to the city limits. This is here with Jeff Rees, your mayor, and then we have the piece here from the traffic map, and that has to refer to the health and safety committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to the health and safety committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
And we also have a letter from the planning commission, and that is from the mayor, and that is dated October 16, which would be today. This is regarding the item approved by the planning commission for council's review and approval. Dear Council President, the U.S.A.R.'s City Planning Commission, now on Monday, October 15, 2018, it is requested that the following items approved by the planning commission be submitted to the appropriate council committees for review and approval. The proposed zoning reclassification of East Mansfield Street, and a proposed update to DCA 1173.02C, permitted uses in the general business district to include 10 veterinary offices, not including outside boarding of animals. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Rees, your chairman of planning commission, and that is referred to the plating committee.
Okay, I need a motion then to send this to the plating committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to submit this to the plating committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We're ready for our standing committee reports. Who's up first? Mr. Wireball, would you like to get started, please?
Sure. U.S.A.R. City Council joined regular committee meetings on Thursday, October 4, 2014, began at 6:00 P.M. and finished up at 6:30 P.M. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, Doug Foat, and Andrew Shaw. First up was U.S.A.R. City, okay, it's called to order by Truca at 6:00 P.M. There was public participation. Kathy Fuller, 1107 South Seduski Avenue, asked why the city made improvements to the former ODOT property on East Irving Street before the sale of the existing street garage and water distribution building. It was explained that the roof of the salt dome on East Irving needed to be fixed as surplus road salt has to be stored there, and that surplus funds were available for the repair, which came in under the amount requiring an appropriation by council. Auditor Joyce, Joyce Schiffer added that the city moved ahead with a salt purchase in anticipation of a doubling of salt prices in the coming months. The order of committee business, Public Lands and Buildings Committee began at 6:07 P.M. Members present, Bruce Truca, Doug Foat, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. The ambulance building, the central joint ambulance district leases, a city building on Flemis Street for ambulance service, and with a new provider set to begin providing service in November, the board has expressed concerns about structural and cosmetic issues with the building. Councilperson Kevin Myers, who serves as council's representative on the ambulance board, said all the ceiling tiles in the building have been removed and will be replaced, and that the walls are being cleaned and floors stripped in wax. Leaks in the roof are also being repaired, and the building will be inspected for mold, no matter what's continued. Wireball recessed the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 6:10 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the Public Lands and Buildings Committee report? No one? Moving on, economic development?
Economic development was called to order at 6:11 P.M. on Thursday, October 4. Members in attendance, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First up, community improvement corporation. A CIC, community improvement corporation for the city, has been proposed as an economic development vehicle. The nonprofit entity is allowed under the Ohio Revised Code, could be used for the sale, lease, and/or development of properties donated to it by the city without the properties being subjected to the normal bidding process the city must undertake. Questions were raised about who would be responsible for a financial loss if a CIC property doesn't sell for the desired price, and how the city's budget could be impacted if former city's properties under the control of the CIC are mismanaged. The matter was continued. Foat recessed that County Development Committee at 6:25 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes of the economic development committee meeting? Finance, Ms. Sack?
Finance committee met Thursday, October 4 at 6:25 P.M. to 6:29 P.M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, Dan Wireball, and myself. Number one, codified ordinance updates. Every September, the Walder Age Drain Company updates the city's codified ordinance to incorporate any changes made by council over the past 12 months, as well as changes made on state levels that are included in the city's codified ordinances. Provided are updated pages in both print and digital format, and the city's website is updated as well. Legislation is also required approving the replacement pages. Wireball made a motion to request legislation, with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by Boyce Foat. Number two, various appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer reported that the following appropriations need to be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, $14,800 to Program 7, General Government, 7750, Maintenance Utility Worker, 21 Personal Services to cover salary and benefits for the rest of the year. B, from unappropriated general funds, $2,757 to Program 7, General Government, 7757, Zoning Administrator, 21 Personal Services to cover the acquisition for the rest of the year. C, from unappropriated waterworks funds, $45,000 to 7526, Waterworks Lands and Buildings, 23 Contractual Services to clean the line of coons at the new water plant. Shaw made a motion to request legislation, making the various appropriations, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by Boyce Foat. Three, Sack recessed the finance committee at 6:29 P.M.
Any questions regarding the finance committee minutes? None? Okay, would you like to finish this up? Who's upset?
Number four, public participation, there was none. Number five, Sack asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees, motion by McKeever and second by Myers, to adjourn at 6:30 P.M. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, the finance committee met in special session on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, at 6:30 P.M. Ms. Sack?
Special Finance Committee met 6:30 P.M. to 6:32 P.M. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and myself. Number one, the special finance committee meeting was called by committee members, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and Chair Monica Sack. The meeting was called to order by Monica, Monica at 6:30 P.M. Number two, proper county budget commission tax rates. Myers made a motion to accept the rates determined by the budget commission, and there was a second by Wireball, all in favor, and the motion passed. Kevin Myers adjourned the special finance committee meeting at 6:32 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the special finance committee meeting? Moving on, the economic development committee met in special session on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, at 6:40 P.M. Mr. Foat?
Yes, special economic development committee was called to order at 6:50 P.M. on Thursday, October 4. Members in attendance, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First up, community improvement corporation. A CIC, community improvement corporation for the city, has been proposed as an economic development vehicle. The nonprofit entity is allowed under the Ohio Revised Code, could be used for the sale, lease, and/or development of properties donated to it by the city without the properties being subjected to the normal bidding process the city must undertake. Questions were raised about who would be responsible for a financial loss if a CIC property doesn't sell for the desired price, and how the city's budget could be impacted if former city's properties under the control of the CIC are mismanaged. The matter was continued. Foat recessed that County Development Committee at 6:25 P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes of the economic development committee meeting? Finance, Ms. Sack?
Finance committee met Thursday, October 4 at 6:25 P.M. to 6:29 P.M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, Dan Wireball, and myself. Number one, codified ordinance updates. Every September, the Walder Age Drain Company updates the city's codified ordinance to incorporate any changes made by council over the past 12 months, as well as changes made on state levels that are included in the city's codified ordinances. Provided are updated pages in both print and digital format, and the city's website is updated as well. Legislation is also required approving the replacement pages. Wireball made a motion to request legislation, with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by Boyce Foat. Number two, various appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer reported that the following appropriations need to be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, $14,800 to Program 7, General Government, 7757, Zoning Administrator, 21 Personal Services to cover the acquisition for the rest of the year. C, from unappropriated waterworks funds, $45,000 to 7526, Waterworks Lands and Buildings, 23 Contractual Services to clean the line of coons at the new water plant. Shaw made a motion to request legislation, making the various appropriations, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by Boyce Foat. Three, Sack recessed the finance committee at 6:29 P.M.
Any questions regarding the finance committee minutes? None? Okay, would you like to finish this up? Who's upset?
Number four, public participation, there was none. Number five, Sack asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees, motion by McKeever and second by Myers, to adjourn at 6:30 P.M. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, the finance committee met in special session on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, at 6:30 P.M. Ms. Sack?
Special Finance Committee met 6:30 P.M. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and myself. Number one, the special finance committee meeting was called by committee members, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, to discuss the community improvement corporation. We had some discussion. Mr. Wireball had addressed a few questions of concern to Mr. Ratliff, as well as Mr. McKeever. Those questions were answered, and Mr. McKeever made a motion to request the legislation. Mr. Wireball made a second, and the motion passed, and I adjourned the economic development committee meeting at 6:40, 7:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that report? Moving on, traffic commission, we have no minutes for this evening. Does anyone have any traffic questions they'd like to discuss with the mayor this evening? Traffic is flowing smoothly in town?
Acceptance.
Acceptance. Okay, you're getting to the end, you're getting to the end there. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept committee and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We'll go on to the reporter city officers. Mayor Rees, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll bring service records before I'll get into public street more in detail, but I wanted to address a couple of important events that we had in the city that I was privileged to take part in over the last couple of weeks. First event was the dedication of the community unity mural, which is the BT building right behind here. Some of you were at that dedication, and, you know, it was a wonderful event. It highlights three school districts that have come into the city, as well as the Broadhurst Festival, and is also potential local for upcoming, like Centennial. It was the brainchild of administrative assistant Kelly Patterson, who developed the idea organizing the entire memory, these local funds, and including a list on the back, I think all we had, or everybody that we need to thank, and put that in the public record, every our teacher, and the students, and the civic groups that donated to the cause, so our civic stewards come through again for us. Second event took a little bit longer from start to finish, but in my opinion, it's one of the most worthwhile projects ever to be undertaken by the city. I hope some of you were able to get to the dedication of the renovation of the TNOC railroad station on Rensselaer Street. The dedication event was on Saturday, and the open house was on Saturday, Sunday. Let me give you just a short history that took place there. You all remember Ben Anzlo, I hope? Good guy, good guy. What else do you remember about Ben Anzlo?
Oh, he was in Michigan.
He rooted for the wrong football team.
He was rooted for the wrong football team, but he was a wonderful guy. But Ben saw the potential in the beautiful architecture and envisioned what it would look like being restored to its original grandeur, and that's just what happened. The historical society, the preservation society, and many, many individuals bought into the vision. They raised money, they got grants, and they contributed volunteer hours, their craft stability. If you haven't seen the restored building, you need to go out and look at it. It's absolutely beautiful, restoration, it was a great day. United in Harmony was there, they sang, they did a beautiful job, and then they had flag raising, certainly, too. So I want to thank all who were involved, from Ben, may he rest in peace, to all the current members, Dave, Firstborn, Rob, and Ethel, and all the, I know I'm forgetting by, there's so many to thank, but we're indebted to saying that beautiful building. I think, to my opinion, it's one of the prettiest buildings in the whole state. Okay, tree board met last evening, and we discussed fall planting. Keep an eye out for new plantings in South Seduski, we're going to complete those this year, and I sent out a call for bids on removing dead diseased trees from our parks. We have eight dead trees at Harlem Field, and we want to get out of there and make there more soccer fields. There's a couple of pretty bad ones that all go to park that need to come out and save us. We're talking about the parks, I know you're going to mention it later, but don't forget Spooktacular, lots of good work is going into that already. You know, Madam Chairman, I mentioned three things tonight, and I brought to council's attention, and this is a rhetorical question you don't have to answer. What do all of those have in common? Think about it. The unity mural, TNOC, the tree board, all of them celebrate a spirit in this community that is alive and well, and these accomplishments are intended for enjoyment of our residents, not only currently, but these folks are looking ahead, you know? Tree plantings, this mural, that building over there is going to look good in 50 years. So we're all looking ahead for future residents, and also to attract residents now to learn that U.S.A.R.'s has been for us a great place to live, work, and family, and that's all I've got, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor this evening? Moving on, for the service safety directors' report?
Yes, Jeff, there's actually a referral to the, for the bill to the finance committee and the budget to the finance committee. We will be ready very soon to discuss the budget to the committee, we've been working hard on it. Spooktacular, the reason I mentioned earlier, is this Saturday, before 7:00. The weather looks like it's going to be in the 50s, maybe a chance of rain in the morning, so I think it looks like it's going to be a go. We're going to have a haunted pool house, balloon artists, bouncy houses, trunk or treat, costume contest, book giveaways, local businesses will host the shelters as usual, prizes every half hour, the Lions Club will be accepting donation of used eyeglasses also. I know, that's the.
Any questions regarding the Finance Committee minutes? None? Okay, would you like to finish this up?
Number four, public participation, there was none. Number five, Sac asks for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committee. Motion by McKeever and second by Myers to adjourn at six thirty P.M. Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on, the Finance Committee met in special session on Tuesday, October the sixteenth of two thousand eighteen at six thirty P.M. Ms. Sac?
The Special Finance Committee met at six thirty P.M. To six thirty-two P.M., members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and myself. Number one, the Special Finance Committee meeting was called by committee members Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, and Chair Monica Sac. The meeting was called to order by Monica at six thirty P.M. Number two, proper county budget commission tax rate. Myers made a motion to accept the rates determined by the Budget Commission, and there was a second by Wireball, all in favor, and the motion passed. Kevin Myers adjourned the Special Finance Committee meeting at six thirty-two P.M.
Any questions or comments regarding the Special Finance Committee meeting? Moving on, the Economic Development Committee met in special session on Tuesday, October the sixteenth of two thousand eighteen at six forty P.M. Mr. Fo.
Yes, Special Economic Development Committee was called to order at six, I'm sorry, six thirty P.M., I'm sorry, six thirty, six forty P.M. Members in attendance were Monica Sac, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself. Number one, the Special Economic Development Committee meeting was called by committee members Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself to discuss the Community Improvement Corporation. We had some discussion. Mr. Wireball had addressed a few questions of concern to Mr. Ratliff, as well as Mr. McKeever. Those questions were answered, and Mr. McKeever made a motion to request the legislation. Mr. Wireball made a second, and the motion passed, and I adjourned the Economic Development Committee meeting at six forty-nine P.M.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that report? Moving on, Traffic Commission. We have no minutes for this evening. Does anyone have any traffic questions they'd like to discuss with the mayor this evening? Traffic is flowing smoothly in town?
Acceptance.
Acceptance. Okay, you're getting to the end. You're getting to the end. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept committee and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on to the reporter city officers. Mayor Reeser.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll bring service records before I'll get into Plymouth Street more in detail, but I wanted to address a couple of important events that we had in the city that I was privileged to take part in over the last couple of weeks. First event was the dedication of the Community Unity Mural, which is the BT building right behind here. Some of you were at that dedication, and you know, it was a wonderful event. It highlights three school districts that have come into the city, as well as the Broadridge Festival, and there's also potential local for upcoming, like Centennial. It was the brainchild of administrative assistant Kelly Patterson, who developed the idea organizing the entire memory's local funds, and including a list on the back, I think all we had, everybody that we need to thank, and put that in the public record, every, our teacher, and the students, and the civic groups that donated to the cause, so our civic stewards come through again for us. Second event took a little bit longer from start to finish, but in my opinion, it's one of the most worthwhile projects ever to be undertaken by the city. I hope some of you were able to get to the dedication of the renovation of the TNOC railroad station on Rensselaer Street. The dedication event was on Saturday, and the open house was on Saturday to Sunday. Let me give you just a short history that took place there. Y'all remember Ben Anzlow, I hope? Good guy, good guy. What else do you remember about Ben Anzlow?
Oh, he was in Michigan.
He rooted for the wrong football team.
He was rooted for the wrong football team, but he was a wonderful guy. But Ben saw the potential in the beautiful architecture and envisioned what it would look like being restored to its original grandeur, and that's just what happened. The historical society, the preservation society, and many, many individuals bought into the vision. They raised money, they got grants, and they contributed volunteer hours, their craft stability. If you haven't seen the restored building, you need to go out and look at it. It's absolutely beautiful restoration. It was a great day. United Harmony was there today saying it was a beautiful job, and then the flag raising ceremony too. So I want to thank all who were involved, from Ben, may he rest in peace, to all the current members, Dave Frustor, Rob Naff, and all the, I know I'm forgetting, but there's so many to thank, but we're indebted to saving that beautiful building. I think, to my opinion, it's one of the prettiest buildings in the whole state. Okay, Tree Board met last evening, and we discussed all plantings. Keep an eye out for new plantings in South Sebaski, we're going to complete those this year, and I sent out a call for bids on removing dead diseased trees from our parks. We have eight dead trees at Harlem Field, and we want to get out of there and make there more soccer fields. There's a couple pretty bad ones that all go apart that we need to come out and say, since we're talking about the parks, I know you're going to mention this later, but don't forget Spooktacular. Lots of good work is going into that already. Now, Madam Chairman, I mentioned three things tonight, and I brought to council's attention, and this is a rhetorical question you don't have to answer. What do all of those have in common? Think about it. The Unity Mural, TNOC, the Tree Board, all of them celebrate a spirit in this community that is alive and well, and these accomplishments are intended for enjoyment of our residents, not only currently, but these folks are looking ahead, you know? Tree plantings, this mural, that building over there is going to look good in fifty years, so we're all looking ahead for future residents, and also to attract residents now to learn Noah, New Cyrus has been for us a great place to live, work, and family, and that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor this evening? Moving on, for the Service Safety Director's report.
Yes, Jeff, there's actually a referral to the bill to the Finance Committee and the budget to the Finance Committee. We will be ready very soon to discuss the budget to the Committee. We've been working hard on it. Spooktacular, the reason I mentioned earlier, is this Saturday, before seven. The weather looks like it's going to be in the fifties, maybe a chance of rain in the morning, so I think it looks like it's going to be a go. We're going to have a haunted pool house, balloon artists, bouncy houses, trunk or treat, costume contest, book giveaways, local businesses will host the shelters as usual, prizes every half hour, the Lions Club will be accepting donation of used eyeglasses also. I know Betsy has been working very hard out at the pool to make a really nice, for all ages haunted area, so it's going to be very cool. On Plymouth Street, we mentioned a little bit about it earlier, they're doing concrete drive approaches now, knee walls are finishing up, sidewalks are in full spring, started RVs are working their way east, curves are all in, they have paved from the city limits out to the, at least first, out to the bike path, and I believe what they're going to be doing now is trying to get all the sidewalks in before they do the final paving, couldn't be wrong there, but it's going to go pretty quickly now, and should be, hopefully, I think they're still on schedule to be able to ride in in a couple, so, well, they've been good, so the workers, they really know how to, they work hard. Properties are for sale. Yes, we've had interest in the Mary Street Garage, but not as much as the water distribution garage. We have decided to put up signs by the end of the week on each property to let people know that they may be driving, they don't have access to our website, or access channel, and they may not know that this property is going to be for sale, so we're going to be putting those signs up, keep your eyes out for those. Then, most of the old water treatment plan has begun with stripping out of the wiring and copper pipes, and that'll move pretty quickly also. We had an insurance meeting, our open enrollment meetings, and I think I mentioned to you earlier, the two point two one percent increase is about the lowest I've ever, you know, it's been going on with health care expenses, so we're very fortunate to have a two point two one, and let's do our own power and make sure we keep it at that, because it leads up the budget very quickly. We've also kicked off, we have Chapman and Chapman here, which are the advisors for Borland Brook where we belong. Chapman and Chapman is the leaders in this field, and they picked up the preventive wellness program for essential saving wellness, and they know it's a cliche, but it's coming, you know, where our employees will need to be healthier, and that's going to be one of the ways that we keep costs down. Then, still working on the water plans, waterlands management plans for County Route Thirty-Five. We revisited our residents, see if there was any more interest. Been opening for the project on the wood lawn replacement will be done November second at two P.M. The OPWC two thousand nineteen Arrowhead Repayment Project, the initial grant application has begun, has been submitted for that project, and leaf pickup. Now, the leaves are still nice and green, and they haven't changed color, but with the colder weather, the shorter days, the freezing is coming, we expect the leaves to turn pretty quickly and start falling. Information will be on the website, but we will not start picking up leaves till the first week of November, so don't put your leaves in streets, please don't do that. Put them on the tree lawn by November first. You may take them to the compost site if you prefer. We're open Wednesdays and Fridays from eight to one, Saturdays from eight to two, or you can put them out with your regular trash pickup, but there is an additional fee for that, so just letting you know. And the very last thing is one more referral. I would like to refer the potential of having a housing study done for the city of New Cyrus. You know, we have some housing issues, a shortage of a certain type of housing and apartments in the city, and we've been discussing the potential to do that, so I'd like to refer that so we could bring it up to full council.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions regarding? Mr. Trucco?
I got a question, I got two questions. One, for the week pickup, so we're extending the hour on Saturday from eight to one until eight to two, because it's posted as one, one o'clock on Saturday.
It's posted after at one?
Yeah, it's posted on the sign.
Website does say two, so I'll put it that way also.
Okay, I'll have the sign, please.
And what's the status of the late half office, other than if there's going to be any instructions?
It's going to be next, the first part of next year, spring from that stuff. We're waiting for proof in state, that, I spoke with our, probably about a month ago. It's really a late big start here, expect to be a little kind of, yeah, this year, and then start on the weather, but it's still coming.
Any other questions? I hear, Mr. Wireball?
The pool's going to be in the spring too?
No, they're, we're waiting for one, the final permit in state. There's, they're ready to go anytime, so that permit in state, expect within a day, and we'll be doing it now. It's going to be, all hands on deck, you get to finish.
And I think one other thing, the controller for the heat up here is supposed to be at this week, isn't it?
Yes. It can go from sixty-two to seventy-eight, you know, but it's.
Yes. Okay, I have some referrals. I have two for the Finance Committee, the billlet, and the budget, if we refer to Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Trucco, to refer the billlet to Finance and the budget to the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We also have a referral of a housing study, I would assume that would go to Economic Development?
And the Finance also, because we will be.
Okay, okay, we'll put both Economic Development and Finance?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fo, second by Mr. McKeever, to put the housing study in Economic Development and Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to the law director, Mr. Ratliff.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to report, I did a couple referrals. First, I need to refer to, what about this? Need to refer the Pokemire contract for updating our CRA, CRA ordinance. We had previously had legislation that approved the funding of it, but we did not actually have the legislation to have the Association of Recreators in that contract, so I need that we have to do finance.
Just finance?
Yeah. And then, Public Lands and Buildings, I need, I have technically two referrals, although it could probably end up being one piece of legislation. We have senior properties at one twelve Wiley Street and three seventeen Southeast Street. Those are properties that are abutting to land bank properties, and question is whether we're going to transfer those to land bank to economic development areas. Those two properties, do you want to vote?
Any questions for the law director this evening? Then I need a motion to put the CRA slash Pokemire into Finance Committee?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Schott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And then also, the two properties, one on Wiley and one Southeast Street, the Public Lands and Buildings. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Trucco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to the auditor. You have the auditor statement of cash position, which is dated September the thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, it was presented to you at the last meeting, we need to accept and file that report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Fo, to accept and file the auditor statement of cash position dated September the thirtieth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Okay, auditor?
Thank you, Madam President. I have some referrals this evening, and I'll be seeing a lot of them, we now reassemble. But number one, we need to appropriate unappropriated general funds, the following, in Program One, security persons and property, which is category seven one one zero and seven one one one, Police Department, and object twenty-one Personal Services, the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to cover salary and benefits for the rest of the year. This will be offset by the money that comes from the school, we have sixty thousand dollars coming from them, we have this here. We also need to appropriate unappropriated waterworks funds, a sum of twelve thousand dollars, category seven five two two, that's waterworks filtration, object twenty-three, contractual services. These funds are needed to cover the electric bills at the water filtration plant for the remainder of the year. We weren't sure at budget time last year exactly what electric was going to be at the new plant, plus we were paying electric at the old plant for several months until everything was out of there and got ready for demolition. And number three, I'd like to refer several transfers within the sewage disposal fund to cover personal services in the Sewers and Drains Department, and the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. And any other legislative matters that may involve.
So as for that first item, we're expecting the schools, New Cyrus City School wanted to share possible police officer, and had a very interesting discussion with one of the, one of the resource officers the other morning downtown, and it's just so nice to see, his face just lit up as he started talking about kids, because he's down in the elementary school, and talking about how they've accepted him down there, and how they've made him right at home, and they come up and they talk to him, they tell him things, and that's exactly one of the reasons why we have him there, as far, even more so probably than the security. So it's a good thing that they learned to know that the police officer, like he says, is their friend, and someone that they can always approach. So, just personal on that.
Don't agree with you, Madam President?
The, so we have that one, and then, okay, so we need a motion then, to do, there's what, two appropriations and one transfer, correct? That's going to take two pieces of legislation then for us to do that, so I need a motion on the two appropriations, the hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred for personal services within the Police Department, and twelve thousand dollars to cover electric bills in the new water plant. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. And finally, we have the transfers within the sewage disposal fund to cover personal services in the Sewers and Drains Department. I need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fo, second by Mr. Myers, to.
Mr. McKeever.
Oh. Well, I did that completely wrong. Okay, motion by Mr. McKeever, and second by Mr. Schott, to refer the transfers, the sewage disposal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Also, before you, you have the Treasurers' Report for July of two thousand and eighteen, and the report for August of two thousand and eighteen. I need, and the Treasurers' Report for September has been submitted for you to review, so I need, once we've covered those, a decent long motion here, the July two thousand and eighteen report and the August two thousand and eighteen report, the Treasurer, I need a motion to accept and file.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept and file the Treasurers' Reports for July and August of two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Do not have anything from the police chief or from the fire chief. A motion to accept city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schott, second by Mr. Trucco, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding the standing or special committees and of city officers. Anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposal of legislation for the first time?
We have four pieces, three ordinances, and one resolution. Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the New Cyrus codified ordinances, that is referred to Finance. Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and eighteen, amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty-seven, two thousand and seventeen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for two thousand and eighteen. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds, a sum of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars to the Personal Services Line item within the Maintenance Utility Worker category, and two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars to the Personal Services Line item within the zoning administration within Program Seven, General Government Subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated waterworks funds, a sum of forty-five thousand dollars to the Contractual Services Line item within the Waterworks Lands and Buildings category, within the Waterworks Subparagraph, and very many, that is referred to Finance. Ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance providing for the incorporation of the New Cyrus Community Improvement Corporation as a corporation, not-for-profit, and designating this corporation as the Community Improvement Corporation for the city of New Cyrus, Ohio, in case of emergency, that is referred to the Economic Development Committee. And final resolution number two forty, two thousand and eighteen, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the County Auditor, and declaring an emergency, and that is referred to Finance Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading of legislation.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucco, to accept this as the first reading of legislation for this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and eighteen is referred back to Finance Committee. Ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand and eighteen is referred to Finance Committee. Ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand and eighteen is referred to Economic Development. And resolution number two forty dash two thousand and eighteen is referred to Finance Committee. This is a time where we allow for public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? None? We need a resource?
I'm in.
Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance forty-four dash two thousand and eighteen, the codified ordinance update. Finance is favorable to ordinance forty-five dash two thousand and eighteen, various appropriations. And Finance is favorable to resolution two forty dash two thousand and eighteen, the Budget Commission tax rate.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee?
Economic Development is favorable to ordinance forty-six dash two thousand and eighteen, Community Improvement Corporation.
Okay, I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and eighteen, which is the codified ordinance update, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sac?
Yes.
Fo?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Fo?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sac?
Yes.
Fo?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand and eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Fo?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand and eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Fo?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sac?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand and eighteen?
So moved, second. Myers? I'm, I'm sorry, Foad?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand and eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution two forty dash two thousand and eighteen, which is the Budget Commission Tax Rates, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second. Myers?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foad?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution number two forty, two thousand and eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two forty dash two thousand and eighteen?
So moved, second. McKeever?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foad?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Resolution number two forty dash two thousand and eighteen is duly adopted, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, does anyone have any unfinished business to bring before council this evening? Mr. McKeever?
I'd like to put back in, back, ready, bring back up, uh, the zoning law in South Sebaski, between Poplar and Ballman.
I'm sorry, Poplar and?
This is coming back from when we had a change of zoning for important.
Okay, so this is on South Seb-
This is already, yeah, this is what?
It's already, it's already in committee.
That is.
So you want us to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Is what you want us to do, okay. So we can, if you'll add that to the agenda for this week, then you'll have information and things you want to bring to council that way, okay. That will be done? Anything else for unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new and miscellaneous business. Saturday, October the twentieth, Spooktacular at Allmiller Park from four to seven P.M. The rain date is October the twenty-seventh. Tuesday, October the twenty-third, Crawford County Community Concert Association, Ethan Bordnick will be there from seven to nine P.M. at the U.Sires Elementary. It's twenty dollars a ticket, and there are tickets available. On Wednesday, October the thirty-first, is Trick or Treat in U.Sires from five to seven P.M. Turn your porch lights on, get your handy ready, kids will be out. Tuesday, November the sixth is Election Day, polls are open from six thirty A.M. to seven thirty P.M. That is also council night. Uh, is anyone working the polls this year? Yep. Mr. Wirebaugh, you are working the polls this year?
Yeah, I have to be out in Washington, is anyone? Uh-huh. See?
Okay, then we have to decide what we want to do.
Oh, yeah, we got good snacks.
You what?
We got good snacks out there.
And the people bring up?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's why you're there, you're doing it, for the food, okay. Uh, we have a choice, either because it's only one council person, we can still have